Okay, good morning. I call the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the DuPage County Board to order. Please stand. And Member Guston, will you please lead the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'll ask everyone to please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now invite Reverend Robbie Robinson, Christian Tabernacle Church of Roselle, to lead us in the invocation. Please stay standing.
Amen. Let us pray. Dear God, the majestic Creator of heaven and earth, the one who is forever seeing, forever knowing, forever powerful, we humbly come before your throne of grace. God, it is you that created governments and governing bodies, Father, not that they may rule in your place, but that they may rule in your stead, to make laws, rules, and regulations that in accordance with your righteousness, your justice, and your love for all people, regardless of color, creed, culture, or connections. Today, oh God, may this board's pencils be sharp and may their minds be even sharper. May they individually and collectively seek you to order their steps, to guide their hearts, and to oversee their plans. May your business be their business as they take care of the business of DuPage County. Bless their hearts, bless their health, bless their spirits, God, so that when they stand before you in the final judgment, they will be able to hear those wonderful words, "Well done, my good and faithful servant." God, to you be all glory, honor, and praise these things I ask, pray, believe, in the mighty, marvelous, matchless name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Cahill.
Here.
Chaplin.
Here.
Childress.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Here.
Eckoff.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Galassi.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Shorzy.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
You.
Here.
Anze.
Okay, thank you. This morning, I invite Member Michael Childress, ACTSO Chair Thomas Reed, Daniel Mason, Jana Richardson, to join me at the podium. Today's proclamation celebrates the life and legacy of the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. To truly celebrate his legacy, we welcome some DuPage County students who participate in a program called Afro-American Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympic, or ACTSO. This group is sponsored by the NAACP of DuPage. The students compete with peers in several academic areas, including STEM, business, and the arts. For our students' benefit, I'll take a quick moment to share a story that has become a part of the legend around Dr. King's famous "I have a dream" speech. The story goes that King had planned to end his speech with another line, talking about advancement and creative dissatisfaction. Yet according to his family, in the inner circle, he hesitated when he got to that line in the speech, because it just didn't feel right. Facing tens of thousands gathered that day in Washington, DC, Dr. King took a breath, hesitating, until he heard a voice from behind him. It was the great gospel singer Mahala Jackson. "Tell them about the dream, Martin. Tell them about the dream," she shouted. And I think we all know what happened next. You see, we think of Dr. King as one of history's greatest speakers. The people who knew him say he was also one of the world's greatest listeners, a skill that served him well. Board Member Michael Childress, who is a former president of the NAACP in DuPage, ACTSO Chair Thomas Reed, and the adult volunteers who encourage the young people here today are, I believe, the student version of Mahala Jackson. They are the adults behind the scenes, encouraging the students of ACTSO Group to compete, expressing their academic and artistic dreams. Today, as we honor Dr. King, we also recognize those in our community who strive to uphold Dr. King's dream, present it of the future with no limits for our young people. I'll read the proclamation, present it, and then ask our guests to make some brief remarks. Whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights and public service, believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all, and challenged all people to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of America. And whereas, in nineteen seventy-three, Illinois became the first state to make Dr. King's birthday a state holiday, as the residents of Illinois honor Dr. King's legacy each and every year on the third Monday in January. And whereas, the celebration of Dr. King's birthday, which falls on January sixteenth this year, is a time for people of Illinois to recognize Dr. King's teachings on advancing equality and opportunity for all by continuing their own time and talents in a day of service. And whereas, in the spirit of Dr. King's dedication to the community, we recognize DuPage ACTSO, a local service organization sponsored by the NAACP, which nurtures academic and artistic excellence among high school students of African descent. And whereas, ACTSO, which stands for Afro-American Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics, partners with the community to raise cultural awareness, showcase talents, academic achievements, and entrepreneurial skills, and to develop leaders and provide life enrichment opportunities without regard to education or economic status. And whereas, ACTSO serves students from more than twenty high schools each year, serving mainly DuPage County students, but also some from Kane, Kendall, Will, and parts of Cook County. And whereas, the ACTSO organization inspires young people to find and celebrate their talents, nurturing excellence, and providing positive reinforcement for African-American high school students. And whereas, ACTSO adult leaders and volunteers help students excel, emulating the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who envisioned a bright, limitless future for all young people, regardless of race, creed, socioeconomic, or other social barriers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Deborah Conroy, Chair of the DuPage County Board and Member of the County Board, do hereby declare January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and urge residents to learn more about his legacy and become involved with ACTSO in their community, which seeks to provide leadership opportunities for students of color, with the hope they will find ways to put Dr. King's teaching into action and honor his dreams of equality and achievement for all. So we now would... Something to say here? Oops.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to take thirty seconds to introduce Mr. Thomas Reed. Many of the things that are in the proclamation, Mr. Reed lives on a daily basis. So through the ACTSO program, he continues to nurture the excellence and provide positive reinforcement for African-American high school students. Thomas has created the community partnership, which raises cultural awareness, showcases their talent, their academic achievements, and their entrepreneurial skills. He has developed leaders and provided life-enriching opportunities regardless of their education or their economic status. It is my great honor to introduce Mr. Thomas Reed.
Thank you, Michael. I'll be remiss without saying that with your leadership as the President of the DuPage County NAACP, you have... I'm standing on your shoulders. You have helped our program grow, and I just want to say we appreciate that. And we're very proud that you are now a member of this illustrious board that's doing the work of the people of the county of DuPage. I, you know, I stand here, I feel like a proud Papa when I think about and talk about our students. They do such a great job. My job and the job of the other adults is really to provide an opportunity, to provide guidance, and to allow our students to really thrive and grow in the different skills that they have. So I want to spend a whole lot of time here. I want to make sure the students get a chance to tell their story about what they do and how the dream of Dr. King impacts them. Raina Ford is a senior this year. She participated in our humanities, and I believe, I won't take all the credit, ACTSO won't take all the credit, but she is a published author now, and she has written a book called ICU. If you're interested in checking out, you can go to projectsi, the letter U, dot, is it org, dot com, and check out her book. So we're really proud of her doing that. And then DJ will come up and say a few words. He was our gold medalist locally in Atlantic City where we had our national competition. He medaled silver in medicine and health, and he hopes to go on to pursue a career in medicine. And then Jana Richardson, she's our double gold, national gold medalist in two categories. She's really spectacular. She medaled in oratory and original essay. So I'm gonna have DJ come up and say something and be followed by Jana.
Hello. My name is Daniel Mason, and last year I represented the DuPage County ACTSO Group in Atlantic City at Nationals. I have so much gratitude for their program and helping me to explore my academic side separate from school. Not only separate from school, but being able to see plenty of people just like me who look like me and who are interested in things that I am interested in, surrounded, surrounding me. Being in school, I don't necessarily have a chance to see a lot of people who look like me or who do things that are similar to what I do. I think the last time that I've had a black male student in one of my advanced classes was all the way back in fourth grade. So being able to see black male students do similar things to me helps me see myself as someone who can achieve hard things academically. And doing this program has also helped me to explore sides of my academics that I normally wouldn't be able to in a school setting. Last year, I did a project researching how video games can impact cognition. And this year, I'm working with a scientist at Argonne Labs to work with the supercomputer there and visualize blood cells and see how that could impact health. And I'm very excited to be doing that and was very excited to be doing the research that I did last year.
Hi, I am Jana Richardson. I am a first-year student at Princeton University, and I participated in ACTSO my junior and senior year. And my last year as a senior, I wrote an original essay, and I performed an oratory speech about African-American vernacular English and how we can understand the people that use it and understand its implications of accepting it in the criminal justice system, in the education system, in the economic system, and how we can liberate black people, even at the level of speech, and how that is crucial for actualizing freedom. I think that ACTSO equips young black students. I just want to echo everything that DeFe said. It proves that black students and just black people don't have to remain at the margins of academia, that we can dominate and that we can take over entire fields and be excellent in them. I have always been in those fields and have always been one of few, and black students don't have to be rare phenomenons sprinkled in throughout academia. We can be large parts of it, and ACTSO proved that to me. And I think ACTSO embodies the vision of Dr. Martin Luther King in many ways. And black students are given resources and directed down the avenues that they need to go down without hesitation. There is a presumption of excellence that Dr. King worked to work for. And also, ACTSO itself is a program that distinguishes us and allows us to be competitive with our white counterpart, which is what also Dr. King visioned as a quality, for us to be seen as competitive. And obviously, Dr. Martin Luther King was a powerful orator and writer, and I was able to personally embody his vision through my writing and through my public speaking and to carry a message for the advancement of my people, as I'm passionate about. Thank you.
My name is Raina Ford. I'm a senior at Fenwick High School, and I have been participating in ACTSO for seven years, so three years during their middle school program and now four years in my high school career. I've competed in poetry written, and this year I'm doing entrepreneurship and original essay. And I came into the ACTSO program not knowing what direction I wanted to do my major or anything. All I knew was I liked writing. And so through ACTSO, it's really allowed me to fine-tune my skills, learn what I like, learn what I don't like, and it's allowed me to carve out my path for what I want to do. So now I know that when I get to college, I'm interested in international business. And echoing what all of my friends have said already, ACTSO has truly helped me to not only network, but connect with other black high-achieving students here locally and also nationally. So I definitely accredit ACTSO for all of my success. Like Mr. Reed said, I was able to publish a book. I was also able to network with different people from different schools. So ACTSO is a great opportunity to learn what you like to do, explore other possibilities, and overall, just able to network with other students. So thank you.
Okay. Today, the work of the newly-elected board truly begins. I ask for your support as we consider my proposed committee assignments on the agenda this morning. It's not easy to balance the requests with requirements of the committee framework. There are so many slots which must reflect balance among districts and individual board members' preferences and skills. I remind you that all board members may attend any committee meeting. You are encouraged to ask questions and express opinions in a constructive, appropriate manner. Like Dr. King, we are all strengthened when we listen and consider opinions different from our own. I hope I have done just that, and I will continue to do so. Let's begin today as we intend to move forward in a positive, constructive manner with respect for all. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. On the matter of public comment, according to our county board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, or shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed thirty minutes. Our first in-person speaker is Dr. Joe Sheehan from Cary Farms.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for allowing me to speak, and it's nice to see so many faces back from... And congratulations to everyone after the election. My name is Dr. Joe Sheehan. I own and operate a twenty-two-acre hemp and honey farm at twenty-eight West 531 Roseville Road. We're five minutes west down Roseville Road, just past Kentagney Homes. They're building a Casey's gas station that you pass on Winfield Road. This Thursday, we're having a ZBA rezoning meeting. We're trying to rezone from residential to commercial to put a four-thousand-square-foot building on site. The building, we're gonna hopefully partner with a social equity license holder for cannabis dispensers. If we can do that, it would anchor a much bigger project probably because it's twenty-two acres. We put in grant funding to the state of Illinois for electrical charging stations that we think we'll get because we owned two diesel engines. So we needed to go ahead, and hopefully it will. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we have a couple of online comments. Evan?
Morning, everyone. First comment is from Joyce Webb. The subject is "Hasmat Trucking Site Is Proposed in Glen Allen at One North 450 Highland Avenue." Comment reads, "On behalf of the wonderful local business and all its neighboring local businesses and families in the vicinity, I am voicing my strong objection to this proposal of putting a hazmat facility within, in close proximity to this or even within the village of Glen Allen at all. How is it possible it's even under consideration? Must be dozens of other commercial-zoned areas far better suited. Looking for yours and other board members to vote no. Thanks for listening." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Erica Carlson. The subject is "Hazmat Trucking Site Near Center Ice." Comment reads, "Absolutely not. As a longtime community member and resident of Glen Allen, I strongly oppose the recent proposal of locating a hazardous waste trucking site in such a densely populated residential area." That is the end of that comment. That is the end of the online comments.
Okay, on to item number seven. On the consent agenda, I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Thank you. A, payments of claims, twelve-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. B, payment of claims, twelve-thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. C, payment of claims, twelve-sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. D, payment of claims, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. E, payment of claims, twelve-twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, ARPA Hotel Assistant Pay List. F, payment of claims, twelve-twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. G, payment of claims, twelve-twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, auto debit pay list. H, payment of claims, twelve-twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, polling place pay list. I, payment of claims, twelve-thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, pay list. J, wire transfers, twelve-thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two, wire transfer. K, wire transfers, twelve-twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, wire transfers, two thousand, seven thousand, seventy-one hundred, and eighty-seven hundred. L, consent agenda, consent item, recorder revenue statement, November two thousand and twenty. M, consent item, monthly receipt and disbursement, thank you, report, November two thousand and twenty-two. O, consent item, change orders to various contracts as specified in the attached packet. P, consent item, DuPage County Recorder Annual Report, FY two thousand and twenty-two. All in... N, whoops, N, consent item, Treasurer's Investment and Deposit Report, November two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor? Motion carries. On to item number eight. For item eight A, Member Chaplin, would you please take this item?
Good morning, Madam Chair. And yes, it is my honor and privilege to move to nominate for the selection of DuPage County Vice Chairman Michael Childress.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Anze.
Aye.
And Cahill.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Vice Chair Childress. I do believe you are going to do a phenomenal job and be a great bridge builder for DuPage County.
Thank you, everybody, and I really appreciate it, and I'll be working hard to make sure I live up to those expectations.
Okay, before we take up item eight B, we have several new members. For everyone's benefit, Mr. State's Attorney, would you please outline the rules regarding action on this item?
The county board rules establish procedure for committee assignments, and the rules provide that the chair presents her assignments for an up or down vote without amendment. If the assignments are voted down, the chair has another opportunity to present the assignments at the next county board meeting.
Thank you, Paul. Member Childress, will you please introduce item eight B?
I would like to rise for that. The county board's assignments have been distributed. Ladies and gentlemen of the county board and citizens of DuPage County, I rise to move approval of the county board committee assignments for the years two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four as presented today.
Second. Roll call, please.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
No one asked to speak, so we continued. If you...
I will take your...
I think we're gonna continue the roll call. And we can have discussion after. Okay, all right. I assume you have something you'd like to say, Member LaPlante. Okay.
Here we go. I am, in the spirit of collegiality, I am going to vote yes for these committee assignments, but I would just like to say two things. One is my concern that we do not have the Fine Arts Committee listed here. We did reach out to you, Chair Conroy, and you said you're gonna talk about this as soon as we vote today. So I very much look forward to that conversation, because I think that's something that means a lot to me, a lot of our community partners, and a lot of arts organizations, for all the work that we've been doing. So I look forward to that. Second, I would just like to voice my concern about reappointing Member Chaplin to the Finance Chair, simply because I don't feel that we... There were some issues that we had last term under her chairmanship that have not been resolved, and I really hope that we can look forward to making sure that we have resolution and new systems in place to ensure that we never have a loss of four million dollars again. And so that's something that's important that I would like to address. Thank you so much, but I do vote yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And as we proceed with our county board, I would like to say that I respect each and every one of you, and will continue to do that. And please, I'm going to ask you, we do not publicly go after an individual member. It's just not something we should be doing. We can have those conversations, they should be had, but we do not do that in public. Clerk, please continue the... Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, Clerk, please continue the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Anze.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
And Chaplin.
Aye.
Oops.
I have you marked, but Desart.
Aye.
Okay. Well, it truly is a new day in DuPage County, and I'm in... Well, it truly is a new day in DuPage County, and I am incredibly proud to work with each and every one of you. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to item number nine. Finance Chair. Chaplin. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I move approval of FIR-002323, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Income Eligible Retrofit Program for year twenty twenty-three in the amount of nine hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, Community Services.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. Eckoff. Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. Ozog. Rutledge. Shorzy. Tornatori. You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
And Cahill.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-002423, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Community Services Block Grant for year twenty twenty-three, Intergovernmental Agreement for the amount of one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, Community Services.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-002823, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois State Opioid Response Criminal Justice Medication Assisted Treatment Integration for Finance Year Twenty Twenty-three, Memo of Understanding with the Sheriff's Office.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-002923, Resolution Abatement of the Special Service Area Number Thirty-One, Monarch Landing, Twenty Twenty-two Tax Levy in the amount of one million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-003023, Resolution Revision to Personnel Policy Manual.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-003123, Resolution Budget Transfers, One Ten, Twenty Twenty-three, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-003223, Resolution Approval of a Second Amendment to Resolution FIR-034022 for the amendment, for an amended intergovernmental agreement with Winfield Township for the use of ARPA funds for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program, ARPA Item.
Okay. Member Rutledge is asking for roll call?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair. I voted no on this item at Finance. I was the only no vote, and I do urge my members to approve this item. But the reason that I'm voting no on this item is that I have been in conversations with Winfield Township. Literally what this is doing is moving senior services all the way up to Wayne Township. And I think for our seniors in the south side of Winfield Township, that provides a hardship. There were conversations about having senior services at our park districts down in Winfield Township that went nowhere. So I do want to see this funding go through, but because of the conversations that I've had with Winfield Township, I will again be voting no on this item.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress. Covert. Desart. Eckoff. Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. Ozog. Rutledge. Shorzy. Tornatori. You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
And Cahill.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR-003323, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program for Townships, for one hundred and forty thousand. Actually, if I just might interject your minute, I think, Member Rutledge, you voted no on this one in Finance, and voted yes on the one above. So I just realized that. So I don't know if you wanna, if we have to go back and redo those?
No, I'll do second. Second.
Right. If she does second, okay. Okay.
Okay. Leave is granted.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, yes. I move approval of FIP-003823, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to ODP Business Solutions for the Purchase of Safety Supplies Through the Regional Office of Education for the Period of January tenth, twenty twenty-three through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for a contract total not to exceed forty-five million, six hundred seventy-three thousand, forty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars, seventy-eight cents per OMNI partner contract with the Regional Office of Education.
Leave is granted. Oh, roll call, sorry.
Apologize.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress. Covert. Desart. Eckoff. Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. Ozog. Rutledge. Shorzy. Tornatori. You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
And Cahill.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FICO-000323, Recommendation for the Approval of a Change Order Amending Purchase Order Five Six Three Two Zero 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 One, SERV, issued to Bond Dixon and Associates to provide continuing legal services as special state's attorney to increase the purchase order in amount of fifty-five thousand, resulting in amended purchase order total amount not to exceed two hundred and five thousand, an increase of thirty-six point sixty-seven percent, State's Attorney's Office.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. And finally, I move on FICO-000423, Recommendation for the Approval of a Change Order Amending Purchase Order Six Zero Six Eight Zero 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 One, SERV, issued to Ohannigan Meyer LLC to provide legal, continuing legal services as special state's attorneys to increase the purchase order in the amount of eight thousand, resulting in amended purchase order total amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents, increase of thirty point seventy-eight percent, State's Attorney's Office.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Onto item ten, Development. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you to the members of the board for renominating me as Chair of Development. I look forward to working with the former and new members, and of course, our staff, which does a phenomenal job. I move approval of DCP sixteen dash twenty-three, a recommendation for a contract purchase order to TPI Building Code Consultants for Services to Perform Plumbing Plan Reviews and Building Inspections on a needs basis.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. Eckoff. Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. Ozog. Rutledge.
Aye.
And Shorzy.
Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve DCO one dash twenty-three, Ordinance Zoning Twenty-two, Twenty-five, Resurrection Church. This is a zoning hearing officer's approval, as well as Development Committee's approval for a conditional use for an electronic message center monument sign, variation to reduce the setback, or right-of-way for a new sign, and a variation to increase the height of a monument size, as well as a variation to increase the area of a sign from a permitted twenty-four square feet on each side to approximately fifty feet.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO three dash twenty-three, Ordinance Zoning Twenty-two, Fifty-One, a zoning hearing officer's approval, as well as Development Committee's approval, for a variation to reduce the interior site setback for a proposed detached garage, and a conditional use to allow an existing detached accessory building.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO five dash twenty-three, Ordinance Zoning Twenty-two, Fifty-Eight, zoning hearing officer and Development Committee's approval, for a variation to reduce the interior site setback from ten feet to approximately four point six feet, to build a new detached garage, as well as a conditional use to increase the cumulative area for a detached accessory building.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
And lastly, Madam Chair, I move approval of DCO six dash twenty-three, Ordinance Zoning Twenty-two, Sixty-two, RZDA, zoning hearing officer and Development Committee's approval, for a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the rear property line where it has existed for at least five years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Tornatori. Onto item number eleven, the Environmental Committee, and Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. For my report this morning, I want to explain the pile of paper that I have in the corner of my spot here. And basically, that includes extra agendas that get printed by just myself and Member Deacon Garcia over about a year, maybe a little bit more than a year. We spend two hundred thousand dollars a year on copy paper here. And I haven't made, I have mentioned this on several occasions, can't really get everybody to stop printing needless agendas, but with the new website, I have been told that we'll have a better mechanism there for taking notes, being able to go back to our notes. I use paper, too, because it's the easiest way for me to keep track of my notes, but I am desperate for an electronic means to do that. So once that new website gets approved, I'll be a little more militant about agendas that are unnecessarily printed. And this is only county board agendas. This is not committee agendas. So I'm going to ask that we all be a little more mindful of extra paper here. So thank you so much for that. And I'll also ask for a vote on ENR-002223, Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Naperville and the County of DuPage to provide funding for the continued operation of a household house or displaced waste collection facility not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. Eckoff. Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. And Ozog.
Thank you, Member Rutledge. And onto item number twelve, Human Services. Member Shorzy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, too, want to thank you for your appointment as chairman of this board, and thank you to the rest of the members for voting. I'm very blessed and very grateful to be able to work on this committee and do good things for those residents most in need. So thank you. I move on item HSR twenty-five twenty-three, A Resolution Recommendation for Approval of a Second Modification to a Community Development Block Grant Agreement with the DuPage Care Center for Water Heater and South Wing Windows, increasing the funding by four hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, for a total award amount of one million, two hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Second, Guston. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Krajewski.
LaPlante. Ozog. And Rutledge.
Member Shorzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSR twenty-six twenty-three, A Resolution Recommendation for Approval of a Second Modification to a Community Development Block Grant Agreement with the DuPage Care Center, Care Center Air Handling Units, reducing the funding by three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, for a total award amount of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Shorzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP twenty-two twenty-three, Ratification of Emergency Contract Issued to Outreach Community Services to Provide Disaster Relief to West Chicago Fire Victims Needing Rent and Security Deposit Assistance through the Community Services Block Grant Intergovernmental Agreement in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Shorzy.
Thank you very much. I move to approve item HSP twenty-three twenty-three, A Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Enter into a Subgrantee Agreement with Outreach Community Services to Provide Case Management Counseling, Job Skill Training and Experience, Work Readiness Training, and GED Assistance to Low-Income Youth Residing in DuPage County under the Community Services Block Grant for the Period of January first, twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-three, in the total amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Shorzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP twenty-four twenty-three, A Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Enter into a Subgrantee Contract with HomeDuPage Inc. to Provide Financial Counseling and Workshops to Low-Income Residents of DuPage County. This contract covers the Period of January first, twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty-three, for a contract total amount not to exceed forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Leave is granted, Member Shorzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP twenty-five twenty-three, A Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Enter into a Subgrantee Agreement with Three Sixty Youth Services to Provide Case Management, Housing, Job Coaching, and Preparedness, Transportation, Educational Services, and GED Grant for the Period of January first, twenty-three, through Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve item HSP 2623, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee agreement with Catholic Charities to provide shelter, case management, and financial assistance to the situationally homeless residents and at-risk-of-homelessness residents of DuPage County and to provide financial support for back-to-school fare for the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st, 23 for a total amount not to exceed $65,000.
Let the record show that member you has left the room, so can we please take a roll call?
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2723, a recommendation for the approval of a purchase order to add to care systems for rental of medical equipment, beds for the DuPage Care Center for the period of March 1st, 23 through February 29th, 24 for a contract total amount not to exceed $96,000.
Roll call, please.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2823, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Music Speaks LLC for music therapy for the DuPage Care Center for the period of January 12, 23 through January 11, 24 for a contract total not to exceed $55,000.
Let the record show that member Covert has left the room, so please take a roll call. And member Guston, I'm sorry, both. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sorry, just making sure we're on the right page. Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2923, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee contract with Teen Parent Connection Inc. through the fiscal year 23 Community Services Block Grant for the purchase of car seats, booster seats, and safety training for low-income county residents in the amount of $30,000 for the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st of 23.
Clerk, please take. Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2923, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee agreement with Home DuPage Inc. to provide financial counseling and workshops to low-income residents of DuPage County. This contract covers the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st of 23 for a contract total amount not to exceed $46,888.
Leave is granted, member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2623, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee agreement with Catholic Charities to provide shelter, case management, and financial assistance to the situationally homeless residents and at-risk-of-homelessness residents of DuPage County and to provide financial support for back-to-school fare for the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st, 23 for a total amount not to exceed $65,000.
Let the record show that member you has left the room, so can we please take a roll call?
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2723, a recommendation for the approval of a purchase order to add to care systems for rental of medical equipment, beds for the DuPage Care Center for the period of March 1st, 23 through February 29th, 24 for a contract total amount not to exceed $96,000.
Let the record show that member Covert has left the room, so please take a roll call.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2723, a recommendation for the approval of a purchase order to add to care systems for rental of medical equipment, beds for the DuPage Care Center for the period of March 1st, 23 through February 29th, 24 for a contract total amount not to exceed $96,000.
Let the record show that member Covert has left the room, so please take a roll call. And member Guston, I'm sorry, both. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sorry, just making sure we're on the right page. Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2923, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee contract with Teen Parent Connection Inc. to provide financial counseling and workshops to low-income residents of DuPage County. This contract covers the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st of 23 for a contract total amount not to exceed $46,888.
Leave is granted, member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2523, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee contract with Teen Parent Connection Inc. through the fiscal year 23 Community Services Block Grant for the purchase of car seats, booster seats, and safety training for low-income county residents in the amount of $30,000 for the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st of 23.
Clerk, please take. Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2723, a recommendation for the approval of a purchase order to add to care systems for rental of medical equipment, beds for the DuPage Care Center for the period of March 1st, 23 through February 29th, 24 for a contract total amount not to exceed $96,000.
Leave is granted, member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2923, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to enter into a sub-grantee contract with Teen Parent Connection Inc. through the fiscal year 23 Community Services Block Grant for the purchase of car seats, booster seats, and safety training for low-income county residents in the amount of $30,000 for the period of January 1st, 23 through December 31st of 23.
Clerk, please take. Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2823, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Music Speaks LLC for music therapy for the DuPage Care Center for the period of January 12, 23 through January 11, 24 for a contract total not to exceed $55,000.
Let the record show that member Covert has left the room, so please take a roll call. And member Guston, I'm sorry, both. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sorry, just making sure we're on the right page. Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And you.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve item HSP 3023, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to SHI International for annual maintenance and support on Palo Alto firewalls for a total contract amount of $101,360.38.
Leave is granted, member Schworzy.
Thank you. I move to approve item HSP 2323, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for professional services for GIS data integration, support, and training for a contract total of $129,750.67.
Leave is granted, member Eckoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you as well for this appointment. Transportation has been a part of my entire adult life, so I'm very honored to be doing this. I'm looking forward to it. Move to, first of all, approve an amendment, DTR 0046E20, Amendment to Resolution DTR 0046D20, a local public agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation and the County of DuPage for County Highway 34, 31th Street from Myers Road to York Road Agreement Re-Execution.
Leave is granted, member Eckoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve item HSP 3523, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute Inc. to provide maintenance and technical support for the county's enterprise GIS software for a contract total amount of $138,458.67.
Leave is granted, member Eckoff.
And finally, I move to approve of TECO 5-23, Amendment to County Contract 5816-0001, issued to Intellis Inc. to provide ad hoc support for ERP reports for amended contract total amount of $44,862.50.
Leave is granted, thank you, member Eckoff. And on to 18, and Transportation, member Ozog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you as well for this appointment. Transportation has been a part of my entire adult life, so I'm very honored to be doing this. I'm looking forward to it. Move to, first of all, approve an amendment, DTR 0046E20,